We call this Jackson County Work Session, November 4, 2019. The order, road call, Mr. Manning.
Mr. Reed.
President.
Mr. Venable.
President.
Ms. Gilbert.
President.
Mr. Seuss.
President.
And Chairman President.
We'll have our prayer to Mr. Porter and our praise to Ms. Venable.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lord God, our Father in heaven, we are truly blessed. Each and every day we look around and see the blessings that we have, especially this time of year, the change of season, it just reminds us of your omnipotence and that you have created everything. You set everything in order and you allow everything to occur. So, we're thankful for that. We're thankful for the blessings that you give us each and every day. We pray you'll be with this meeting, pray that you'll be with the commissioners as they make decisions and discuss things that are important to the citizens of this county. And that you give them wisdom and discernment, compassion, and strength. Watch over us, oh God, and guide us every day. Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Praise the Lord to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Lord, please don't let dump trucks kill us today.
Next would be to approve the agenda.
I'm making a question.
I second it.
Vote, she may second, or favor say aye.
Aye.
On the post. We have no one presentations, no one signed up to speak. Move on to discussion items. First would be the 20 holidays.
Didn't we agree last year to go with the study, the ending or something?
Well, we were gonna relocate it, but we hadn't. They were saying a couple reasons, maybe they could lie down, but seemed like it didn't fall, it would be harder for us to use their holiday. I think the main thing was they tried to figure out when we'd do New Year's Day.
When is New Year's?
It'll be on Wednesday. Just like Christmas, it falls on Wednesday.
Yeah. And we're first will be on Wednesday, so. Do you want to know how you want to move forward from your proposal for the days, or just do January 1st?
We're doing extra Thanksgiving at Christmas, correct?
Yes. Yeah, well, it's the two.
Yes.
New Year's, just another day to make, I mean.
Other than ones that, you know, maybe watch football and stuff, I mean Tuesday, or, I mean you come in Monday, and off Tuesday, Wednesday, then come in Thursday, then.
I'm still concerned about the weather before then, seeing how we've already had snow thurries in the area, and we always have flooding, shortening the access to the courthouse and other services this far out.
Well, Christmas fall on Wednesday, are we looking at giving Thursday variety for Christmas? Is that what it cost to make up?
We already get that on.
Yeah, I don't, it won't this year, it'll be Thursday.
Christmas is on Wednesday.
This is Tuesday.
No, we're not gonna do that one, we've already done.
Yeah.
He's asking about 2019. What have we already done? The other holiday season.
I meant, I thought it was Tuesday.
No, it's gonna fall on Friday, because it's New Year's. Twenty twenty will be on Friday, that turns on Wednesday. And we're already leaving Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, correct?
One thing I keep in mind, you don't, you're not getting additional calls.
Yes. It's just limiting services, what I was concerned about, and we don't have that either. We're only going to do Christmas.
I mean, if we have weather, I'm assuming Jonathan can call people in right now, if we have weather being due in the days of.
Yeah, they were. They were, that's, I mean, I was about to keep it, get access to like, probably Judge's office and Revenue Commissioner's office and things like that. The courthouse door to be closed, especially. And how would that affect sanitation also? Do they double on routes? How do they handle that?
I know a lot of folks also waiting for the last day of to pay their land taxes before January 1st.
Like New Year's Eve would be affecting there.
Thursday grace period, though.
Yeah, come there on holiday.
Yeah.
I make the motion to approve this list of standards, if somebody has to add a date for New Year's.
No, this is just a work session.
If everybody's good with that, we'll put it on next week.
Or if something comes up between the two next week.
All right. Next would be the vote sales tax. This, I don't remember exactly what year, can you remember how, it was around, what, 2015?
14.
14. I'll take, you want to explain it to me, my display will be better.
Some years ago, 2014, a request was made of the commission to approve a reduction in tax for vehicles, the airborne taxation of vehicles, and the commission voted to do that, and apparently, the Revenue Department in Montgomery is confused by that, that the resolution clearly says it's for vehicles and does not include votes, but the Revenue Department in Montgomery apparently is confused, and once the commission clarified that the reduction does not apply to vessels, but only to vehicles, so, it needs to be, I think Mr. Arnold has asked us to put in the minutes of the meeting for the commission to affirm that it was only for vehicles and not vessels that the resolution applied to, so that's what it's all about.
And the original resolution was in 97?
No. The one that was previously adopted was in, I think, 2014.
So, they've been giving the sales tax on the votes?
No, it's just, it's just for August, clarification. Nothing will change to what we did. It's just to clarify for August more.
If I remember correctly, the reason we done it, because some car dealerships were actually making their sales outside of the county, because like, somebody come from Marshall or Madison or Beattieup County, they were, their percentage was lower, they were delivering the vehicle and actually making the sale in that other county, and that's the reason that we done it.
The purpose, you're exactly right, Mr. Venable, the, what had been going on for years and years and years for dealers in Jackson County and Scottsboro, had been making deliveries, you come to their shop to buy a vehicle, and they would deliver it in Marshall County where the tax was lower, so, the city of Scottsboro and the county agreed to reduce that tax so that it would be equal to the adjoining counties' tax rate, and we wouldn't have to go through this process of making deliveries in other counties, and it, because it hurt everybody for that to occur, because then we weren't getting any tax from those. So, that was the purpose of it all, and again, Mr. Manning has corrected me, it was appropriate judge who needed this information and requested us to make this part of the record.
So, we're just basically here to change some verbiage of the, just clarify, just clarify, let it's.
It doesn't change anything.
Vehicles, not that specifically.
It doesn't change anything, it's just, so it'll be in our minutes, the minutes of the commission to clarify that.
I'm doing the same with this meeting.
Next would be Senior RX, with the retirement of the current Senior RX Coordinator, Penn Freeman, will be transferring Mary Lou Thompson to this position. Ms. Thompson has been training under Miss Freeman to make this transition seamless. Basically, we had that position coming up because of retirement, and we had Ms. Thompson who could fill in, so she started training, but it would just be an internal transfer. Good with that, we'll put that on next week's meeting also. Next, we've done the work surplus. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner. I did provide a couple handouts that I'll be working from, and then the presentation that you've already seen, so I'll just do a quick recap and then get into this other. The purpose of this one, as you recall, is just a, just an overall goal of not just dump trucks, which will be the focus of talk tonight, but also on-road trucks, tractors, and a little bit of other equipment in this, in this outlay. The first, the first trucks we talked about, and looking at this sheet, probably be the best summary, and we'll be working through that to shed a couple of arrows at those numbers. The 2020 Kenworth for the heavy-duty triaxles, that's, this is just a, the dump truck portion of that larger spreadsheet. So, the 2020 Kenworth T800s are the available option from ACCA that work way of the build dates to aligning the March auction, and you're looking at the price there on the truck and the bed, so that four times is basically how we arrived at the new price that's on your sheet. Surplus number is from existing inventory that would be sold, which would be three, and then the difference there that you're looking at is essentially the, the cost difference in additional truck, and then the enlarged cabs, that was a recommendation of the auction company we talked about, and then every year they go up just a little. Medium-duty tandem axle options, we talked about two different options here that are available, that work out for the build date, and that is the two different prices, one is for the Kenworth T370, and the other for the Peterbilt 348. Peterbilt's a little bit higher. Service, I think, could be anticipated a little bit better on Peterbilt, they're trying to enter into this market, and then resale, maybe a little to Peterbilt, but I wouldn't be scared of either one, these are the two top brands as far as resale goes, so, the number we arrived at, there's three. Three is what we're proposing, three new, and that's at 120 each, so that's, that's where the 360 comes from, you can see that 120 is just being generous for budget numbers here, and then the surplus numbers, 210, that's from the J.M. Wood proposal that, that you were given last, last meeting. It has all of the trucks that we'll be talking about, and it looks like this, has our existing inventory of heavy-duty triaxles and the medium-duty tandem axles, which would be four, so selling four, buying three in this proposal. Two are older trucks, the two older Internationals, and then two are the 2018 T370 Kenworth, similar to what's being proposed here. So, that 150,000 is the difference in surplus and new, I'll make that change. The road tractor, two options there, the Peterbilt is available, it works out better for the, the build date where the Kenworth doesn't, but I don't know how far the Kenworth would be off it, might could still work. Peterbilt's a little bit cheaper, and I feel better about the build date on it, availability on it. So, those are the two prices in the comparison on those two options for the road tractor. You'll see in your numbers a 140 new, 128 surplus, the difference there is a, is a $12,000 upcharge, and that's for that Eaton 18-speed Ultra Shed, it's a recommendation by the auction folks, so, they're saying, get away from manual, we've been manual this entire time with our road tractor, but there's market difficulties there, and they recommend. So, that's, that, that kind of gets us worked through that sheet, and that's what you're looking at there, and the totals provided are what we anticipate now, but a little small number that I forgot about last time, is a rotate, rotation cost per year, that's at 15,000. What that's based on is in this, in this proposal that you see from J.M. Wood, you'll see 2018 tandem axle medium-duty Kenworth in there. When those go to auction, they'll be three years old. There's a $90,000 guarantee in this proposal for those trucks, and we paid 107 for. So, if you run that depreciation out linearly, that's five and a half thousand a year. Okay, we're gonna have three tandem axle trucks in this proposal, so I put 5,000 on each one of those, just as a cushion for rotational costs. What I actually think will occur, I know on the heavy-duty triaxles and the road tractor, this auction company is gonna say, we guarantee you every dollar you spend back one year later, and the actual returns we're gonna realize, in my opinion, will cover the depreciation we'll see in the medium duties. So, assuming the medium duties are the same as the ones we just had proposed to us, I believe the profits from the others will cover all that, and this entire proposal should, should run with no magnets cost if we turn over any. And lastly, it's just this proposal that I referenced in that, it lists, it lists the inventory on medium duties and triaxles and our road tractor. And that's, that's all, is there any questions about? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So, please, do we need to, we need to land them on this week's meeting?
Please, if, if you're good with that.
All right. Everybody good with that? Next, we rebuild Alabama Act Grant, Campbell will hand out, so, two different projects. Guess we need to make decisions on which one.
Or, or project of your choosing, so, this is, this is as a, just to give you a little background on the rebuild Alabama Act and Grant Program. It's a $250,000 max, it's one project available, it can be any classification roadway or bridge. So, the 250,000 is really, you know, rather small when it comes to a project size, but there are a couple of roads that came to mind quickly on that, that we had looked at estimates before that have been issues. 100 County Road 74, this is a stretch from the Tennessee Line to 209, right behind Big Daddy's. Notice the ADT here, it's sky high, and you can see the estimate. If you're interested in a more detailed estimate, I have that, I have that with me too, we can look at some of the nuts and bolts, but I just did the summary.
Do you know the date of, say, this stretch of road that was, when it was re, when it, lifetime it was paved? Is it back in the eighties?
I can look, it, it, that looks like 80 there, I'm there, that has the river gravel as aggregate, I'd have to look to be certain, but I'd say you're accurate on, you know, that, that half or portion of that.
I believe, I remember right, that this was actual paving that was on it before they built the whole lane, the 72, so it's been a while, and then the road is in terrible shape.
Yeah, this is a shot, state line.
Looking back and down.
Right looking west. And then, another shot on that, this is on past the pavement joint and a different hot dig station. It has some issues, but more of it is, you know, more of it is good, better condition, I should say. Project number two that you have there is County Road 412, so this is the road that leads to the landfill. This has been an issue in the past, and a lot of work's, you know, been done to, to keep that passable, but you're looking at probably at one of the worst areas there, and that's up near the landfill entrance, equipment crossing regularly and, and heavy trucks turning, you know, obviously is an issue, but also on down the road, for the trucks that are using this mostly, that it's, you know, wet dishes, a lot of the base issues have been addressed. In the background, you can see a patch there, it was obvious base failure that's been repaired, but our proposal would include wide limits, some base repairs that still need to be done, and resurfacing, and some concrete, similar to, similar to the other project with concrete intersections, we would have, unfortunately, there's a big concrete intersection around the landfill entrance. Little bit higher price tag, but I, I wouldn't be too alarmed by that price tag, there's some of this that, that we cushioned a little, just that uncertainty on what we designed. When we get into the nuts and bolts, for example, the concrete intersection we have, I think, at 10 inches, and the last project was more, around eight and a half, so, that price could come down a little.
We're looking at landfill access there, and do you know how many residents are on that road?
I don't know the exact number, there are several, you know, down on Providence Church side, and then obviously you have an intersection with 36 there, that connects from 412 to 42 Hollywood. Those residents, I'm sure, you know, can use this road as well.
And on the other road that's proposed?
On 74.
Zero, right?
Oh, there, there is a residence or two. One, one for sure, maybe two between, between Big Daddy's and 209.
On 412, if you're, if you're pugging doing from 72 all the way back around to 72, or does it just go back to the entrance of the landfill?
Yeah, 1.4 miles, I believe, in this entire stretch.
And it's the only road in and out of there, only access point.
We're talking 412?
Yes.
412 makes a loop, so, no, on the other side of the entrance to the landfill, the, you know, the residents on that side will have access from 72 along, along that route, and then most of the landfill traffic is directed the other way, so, out by, out by Providence, I guess.
At Markham, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I just know that, you know, on this other road is in terrible shape, I travel it quite often, but there's access to the same places via US Highway, whereas I was thinking, you know, these folks have no other access, so, that's what I was getting at.
Go both.
Yeah.
Fish and food.
Exactly.
It's in about six months.
Right. On this one page here, it's got, it shows a lot of dirt, mud, and gravel on it, are there ways to keep that from?
You're talking about this area?
Yes, yes, is that just asphalt?
That way, if I'm not mistaken, that's the top of the hill when they go to the C and D side of the dump.
That's right.
And you're coming off of that hill, trucks are bringing, when they go down into the pit.
Right, they're picking up mud and coming back out.
So, that's on top of asphalt, it's not just a place.
It's got a large stretch of gravel, but it's, your tires don't clean off by the time it's out there.
So, that does have asphalt in it, right?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay.
Think they have any thought on which direction they want to go, this road?
I think I wanna ride over.
You want to do both?
I wanna, oh, no, ride down there and check them out.
Oh, I said you will do both.
Well, yeah, well, that and 60 more, about six, like Mr. Venable was saying, 60.
I'm just gonna have to agree with what Ms. Gilbert said, you know, the residences are a concern, living on this road right here. It's hard to make a decision, you know, there is another, I can say it's over on the road to Big Daddy's, I'll say it too, so. I'm like, Mr. Venable said, I wish we could do both, but there's a lot we need to look at for the rentals.
This project has a November 30th deadline for submittal, and we'll have a narrative we have to include to explain the purpose of the road, why it's important, et cetera, so, if there is another project that you would like us to look at, y'all would like us to look at, let us know, we can, we can work that up too.
Not a guarantee, I mean, we'd probably have better luck if serviced in the landfill, would you think, with Alda approval of it, since it's got more residents on it and it's serviced in the landfill area, would you not think 412 would probably?
Quite possibly, I think the ADT, you know, we could, we could work the angle to ADT on the other route, if you wanted to go that way, but this has an economic purpose for sure, which I think, you know, is always, is always positive, especially from the narrative aspect and its function.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If everybody wants to check it out, then we'll, we'll see, we'll, we'll put it on next week's meeting, and then we'll, if everybody's got a decision, we'll move forward. Next, we report some staff. Mr. Manning?
Nothing to say.
Mr. Campbell?
Have a few updates, thank you, Chairman. County Road 43 and Athene Bridge, so, when we last talked, we were, so you can see here what the hydro demo surface looks like, it's away some full-depth repair in some places here, and the rails are built out for the screed. That's actually the screed rail, if you can see it on top of the two-by-four, right above the handrail, and then that's a, that's just a working, a working rail that's below the guard rail that they use for handwork and finishing. And that's the screed sitting on the rail at the time of dry run. You can see the pour, this occurred Friday, this is the deck being poured, and this is the beginning of it, you can see the screed, where the concrete is placed in front of the screed, it augers it in and works it, works it down to the grade that's set from the rail, and then the pan, you can see the pan drag and the burlap drag that follow. And this is the whole process basically laid out there, you can see the screed has moved in the background, and then a work bridge intermediately there, and they're working the gutter lines, the weak holes, and then also doing the timing from the, and we get work bridges, and in the last work bridge, you can see the wet burlap is filed up, and that'll be the stage of the wet cure period, once it's timed, gutter lines are worked, the burlap's placed, and the wet cure period starts. And that's it from Athene.
What timeframe, we're still on schedule?
We're still on track, the weather was a setback as well as the cool temps, they lost several days with all the rain, and then the cool temps will lengthen here in time slightly, but we still should be good on our three-week advertisement, so, we're looking at somewhere around the end of week, probably returning to service. County Road 61, that's a resurfacing project that is for Pisgah School Zone, the final plans have been submitted, we've actually sent our monologues, so, we're still anticipating a January letting on that project. County Road 77 has been awarded, that's the safety project for 77 Mountains.
Square.
That's, yes, ma'am, that's awarded and waiting to notice to proceed. County Road 90, we're in the scuffle work stage, and we've started plans on it, as well as 33 and 25, we're, we're working on quantities and plan work on it. And then this, obviously, the grant, this grant project, you know, that's ongoing. As far as the engineers are, this is a crazy busy month, there's 22 bridge inspections, nine snow inspection, one underwater inspection, and five interim, and obviously, you all know from email, we're, we're gonna be shorthanded in that area now. There, as far as utility projects go, and the Pisgah has a water expansion going, we're inspecting section Dutton, there's a large, large effort project going on there to revitalize both pockets State Park, and so that's requiring a water main extension into that park that's along there right away. Water, water, sewer, and gas is doing a natural gas extension along 33 and County Road 13. That's projects, there's, you know, also the maintenance thing, I won't get into all the detail on, but the highlights of that are County Road 118 that's still going on.
The other source line, how's that going?
The, the water was, the water.
The, the water was, the water was pretty detrimental to our, you know, our setup that we were. We were experiencing low water. Even the drought was helpful. I'm going to work on that. But the water flooded all that. So it was, it was down some today. We're, we still think we can make the anticipated pour that's planned for Wednesday. Wait for our center beam hopefully and that south of Buckman.
Thank you.
Did it?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Porter?
I, I do have a comment, if you don't mind. I want to make clarification on some things that were said at a previous public meeting at the Warren High School a couple of weeks ago. At that meeting, a woman stood up and asked a question that dealt with attorney's fees. And I think Mr. Manning adequately answered that question. I've had the privilege and honor to represent this county as a county attorney for almost 20 years. And in the last five years of that 20, I've had the privilege of practicing law with my daughter, Claire Porter Bell. And she has her own clients, her own caseload, but she takes off time from that to come with me to this meeting on a regular basis. So that she knows what's going on in this county. She can answer questions if I'm not available, so she can keep informed. And I want to set the record straight that we do not charge. Commission knows this, Mr. Manning knows this, the records reflect that. We do not double bill for her being. I think the woman who asked the question intentionally left the distinct impression that we were overbilling the county. I want to clarify that for the record. And also a comment was made that I found and found at that time to be uninformed, demeaning and offensive to all the young lawyers in this county. When, when my daughter was referred to a good little girl. She would not have been referred to that way if she had been a boy, a man. But she was. And I think that the person who made these comments, again, was uninformed and was demeaning to her and the other lawyers who work hard. They, they get their undergraduate degree, they go law school, get a law degree and then they pass the bar. They work hard. So all the young lawyers deserve respect. I just want to clarify the record that we built this county. We built the county for the time we spent and then the time we needed. And I want to make sure the record reflects that and the public knows that. Because even though you know what the record reflects, the public doesn't know that. So I just want to clarify that and thanks for the time.
Thank you.
And we appreciate her being up to date because there are times you have conflict in your schedule. Guys had to come and be with us.
Mr. Ridge?
Well, I want to tell Ms. Porter that was what I said. And very, well, I'm proud to have Claire here with us. She's, she does a good job, does a great job. And I would have you about 100% on what you just stated.
Thank you, sir.
And towards the question, it shouldn't have been asked. I mean, but we know, we know a lot of things. The county people, the residents sometimes just assumes a lot of things. But I'm proud to have her here every week. And I'm proud she's here tonight.
Thank you.
Chairman?
I'd like to make it what Mr. Ridge said. You know, we employ the Porter Law Firm and you're very blessed to have a family member working with you. And we appreciate what you do, what you guys do.
Echo that and what I said earlier? Thank you.
Same here, same here. I would have had, I saw one comment, Mr. Campbell. I got a phone call in Jackson, Michigan, related more than I, than I have. I've been through there, but on County Road 17, around Red Shelton's place, basically, down to Don Olinger's. They asked about some reflectors. They had some bad fogs and they, you know, they said a lot of traffic on that road. Jason may not know where I'm talking about. I mean, I know where they stated that, but that's basically, I told them, I said, just give me some house names. And they said, Red Shelton down toward Don Olinger's. Olinger.
I know the area you're talking about. They're, they're missing some center line mark?
Yeah, there's, there's no, no reflectors except, you know. And they said it's, the fog was so bad, I didn't, you know, just wondered if we could make access some of that. I told them I'd bring it up and see. Other than that, I'd like for y'all to remember my dad. He had a stroke, wings and that, in the hospital. Got a little pneumonia. Met with the doctors, so I've known all day today and decided about feeding cube tomorrow. So just remember, remember him, please.
Thank you. Only thing I got is everybody keep Kevin Dougson your prayer. Having some health issues, so I appreciate everybody remembering him. And I do appreciate you, Ms. Porter and your friend Claire. That would be most good, sir? I'll try to say aye.